Call to order the Ann Arbor City Council meeting of August 23, 2018. Mayor Taylor and Mayor Protam, Councilmember Chuck Warpahowski are on vacation, so I will be chairing the meeting tonight. I've not done this before, so please bear with me. Can we please now rise for a moment of silence? And now if you are able, can you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kirk Budryk, can you please call the Board of Council?
Councilmember Kylisapathy? Councilmember Bannister?
Here.
Councilmember Westphal?
Here.
Councilmember Lum?
Here.
Councilmember Grand?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Councilmember Eaton?
Here.
Councilmember Crapel?
Councilmember Warpahowski?
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can someone please move tonight's meeting agenda? Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Is any discussion of the agenda? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The agenda is approved. Mr. Lazarus, do you have any communications this evening?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. Just a few short items. As was announced, I think, last time that the Ann Arbor Police Department is going to resume the downtown beat, we'll be able to provide officers on bicycle or foot so they can have a more visible and approachable presence. I'd like to also let folks know that we are working with the scouting council to plan for Merit Badge Day for scouts, both young men and young women, to come here and work with our staff to help their pursuit of becoming Eagle Scouts. Tomorrow we'll have a swearing-in ceremony for the Ann Arbor Police Department's newest officers. They'll be here at council chambers at noon. I'd like to call people's attention to the fact that the city of Ann Arbor's natural preservation area staff will be conducting several items during the month of September, and those are best, information is best gained by going onto the NAP website at www.a2gov.org/nap. For the foodies among us, Ann Arbor was featured on the Cooking Channel's Cheap Eats program last night. If you want to see the replay without commercial interruption, you can get it on discovery.app-box.com. And finally, I'd like to thank Officer Ryan Scott for spending his evening with us. Hopefully it'll be a short one, and I turn it back over.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lazarus. We have one proclamation tonight, a proclamation declaring tomorrow, August 24th, Lafora Body Disease Awareness Day. I would like to invite Aziza Kasham to the podium. Ms. Kasham is the mother of a child with Lafora Body Disease and an advocate.
It's a proclamation by the mayor. Whereas Lafora Body Disease, Lafor progressive myoclonous epilepsy, is an orphan disease that affects fewer than 200,000 people nationwide, it is extremely devastating to families as it usually manifests in healthy children in late childhood to early adolescence, and often claims the lives of its victims within 10 years of onset. And whereas Lafora Body Disease is an inherited form of progressive myoclonous epilepsy, the disease affects the entire body, causing difficulty with mobility and speech. Other symptoms include convulsions, memory loss, hallucinations, dementia, frequent urination, and loss of consciousness. And whereas ignorance of this disease is widespread, even among physicians, patients are frequently misdiagnosed as having myoclonic epilepsy. Though symptoms are very similar, only genetic testing or a skin biopsy can confirm the diagnosis. And whereas children with this diagnosis are sadly underrepresented in the field of research, as the rarity of the disease means it receives little funding for genetic research. As a result of this, affected families are often financially strapped and left as the sole advocates for their children. And whereas help and hope is on the horizon for those suffering Lafora Body Disease, as many genetic advances have been made and clinical trials aimed at a cure are likely to begin in 2019, now therefore, I, Jane Lum, on behalf of Mayor Christopher Taylor, the mayor of the city of Ann Arbor, do hereby proclaim August 24th, 2018, as Lafora Body Disease Awareness Day, and recognize the importance of increasing public awareness of this disease and its early and accurate diagnosis.
Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight, Ms. Kasham. And if you'd like to share some thoughts, we'd appreciate that, and the podium is yours.
I would like to start off with thanking Mayor Taylor and Jane for giving this disease a recognition it deserves. I would also like to ask some questions, the community some questions. When did we start to turn our heads at the most vulnerable? When did we stop caring for one another? When did we start to divide each other from one another? When did we start to let children fall through cracks? You see, for 16 months, this is what I've been dealing with. And it's a battle I have to fight alone, because at this time, not even my son is able to fight it. I have reached out to every place humanly possible and have heard every excuse that there is, and at the end of the day, all I'm asking is for help with giving my son the chance to see a specialist. The quality of life that he deserves, quality of life that he had 16 months ago, that is nothing any person should have to fight for. We are Ann Arbor. I thought we could do better than this. My 16-year-old boy deserves better than this. And I hope researching this disease, people will share this story and help out, because a situation like mine is a situation no one should have to face. But help is as easy as a share. This cause, this cause, I believe, can save my son's life, if not give him treatment options. No child should ever have to explain why their life is worth living. If we can find it in ourselves to support a cause like this, right in our community, maybe we all can do better for him, my son. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. We now come to Public Comment Reserve Time. Public Comment Reserve Time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at Public Comment Reserve Time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may only have one person speaking at a time, and speakers may not grant the reserve time to another speaker. Finally, if you require assistance while speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it. Our first speaker tonight is Kathy Griswold.
Tonight I want to describe a proposal for improving safety at our marked crosswalks, and I want to thank fellow hashtag A2 council tweeters for their input and recommendations into this proposal. At the same time, I will not apologize for my previous anger, as I believe it is the appropriate response to the needless deaths that we have experienced at unsafe crosswalks in our community. What's the situation? There is general agreement that our crosswalks need to be improved. Many citizens have identified deficiencies and inconsistencies with our crosswalks. They have used emails to me, posted on the A2 Fix-It system, and some of them worked on the A2 Safe Transport Report that was the basis for the improvements that we're experiencing around our schools. And with that, staff is addressing the K through 12 school crosswalks, but we have an urgent need to address all of our marked crosswalks with a plan to bring them up to minimum standards. Unfortunately, some of our newer crosswalks are the most deficient with respect to signage. What's the solution? We need to establish standards for crosswalks, and this is almost done. Staff have been working on this. Number two, we need to take an inventory of our existing crosswalks for compliance with the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices and staff-defined criteria, including illumination, signs, markings, location, sight distance, traffic signals, RRFBs, and the list goes on. I would defer to staff to develop a complete list. And number three, we need to develop a budget and a timeline for achieving citywide compliance. In addition, council could encourage public engagement via the A2 Fix-It system. And just one example of that compliance is actually quite simple. This is W112 sign. This is a sign that most of you are familiar with. It is a sign that's used throughout the world. It is sort of the universal crosswalk sign. And I want to read a couple of sentences here from the Michigan Department of Transportation Sign Manual. For all roundabout approaches with pedestrian crosses, the W112 shall be placed on the right-hand side of the road, placed just beyond the pedestrian crossing. For roundabouts with multiple approaches, like on Getty's Road near Concordia University, you need to have one on the right-hand side and the left-hand side. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra Peterson.
Hi, I'm here tonight to talk about the annexation of the properties on Newport Road, known as Petition 7. And what I wanted to do is to just remind you that it's more than land parcels. There are families that are being heavily affected by this decision, and we were asking that you delay the decision from October 1st to a later date. And so we represent, my husband and I, represent one family, but we own parcel right in front of the house that my husband grew up in, where my in-laws live. And I just want to give you a little bio so that you know whose lives you're affecting by making these choices. Nancy and Dwayne Peterson reside at 2477 Newport Road. Both are Ann Arbor natives, and the land that they live on has been in Nancy's family for 80-plus years. Nancy grew up in the house located at 2437 Newport Road, and it was gravel at that point, and her parents remained in that home until their passing. Nancy's father was Franklin Kenzel, who managed the Michigan Union for 40-plus years. The Kenzel Room in the Michigan Union is named after him. Both Dwayne and Nancy are now in their 80s, on a limited income, and are retirees from the Ann Arbor Public School System. Nancy ran a base kitchen at Forsyth Middle School. Dwayne was a teacher at Tappan, a principal at Slosson Middle School, and assistant principal at Pioneer High School. They built their current home in 1964 and have no desire to move, as they love the area. Their home is 1,100 feet from Newport Road, with multiple significant elevation changes. In addition to the cost of laying 1,100 feet of water and sewer lines, the additional installation of two lift stations will escalate the cost. Lift stations are needed to pump the sewage to the road and the water to their house. It is unclear at this time, because the driveway is so long, if one lift station would be sufficient to get sewage to the road, and because there's also a significant elevation change. An estimate is being worked up by nights excavating, but we had it, a quote written up about seven, eight years ago, and it exceeded $100,000. This is a couple in their 80s. Nancy's fighting breast or bladder cancer, and my father-in-law has dementia. So we really, this is really going to put a huge burden on their lives. Many trees would need to be removed or possibly damaged, and there are definitely landmark trees along the driveway, and the lines need to cross under a creek, because there's a creek under the driveway. Now, my husband and I, we own the parcel between their house and the road, so we have no frontage on Newport Road. We are both graduates of Ann Arbor Public Schools. We have an easement that's 450 feet from the road, so way far more than the 200 feet that is required, that is mandatory to hook up. It is very possible we would need to cross the creek twice to get to our property under both, because we can't go across the easement for Tom Weeder's backyard. That's it, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Peterson.
Hi. I'm also here to talk about the annexation proposals for not only our property on Newport Road, but also in general, for all the people that are going to be impacted by this. We were thinking about building on our lot just this past summer, and we were talking to a builder, and he said, you know, chances are, you'll have to pay a tax for every big tree that comes down. Well, there's no question that if we are forced, and I emphasize the word "forced," to do this, at least 20 to 30 trees are going to come down. Will we be reimbursed by those from the Ann Arbor City? If not, it seems like a huge double standard. In addition, we have a concern for all the other people that are in the same position that we are in. I hope to retire in the next year or two, and our dream is to build a house right in front of my mom and dad's house, to be able to help care for them. And if this goes through, I'm going to have to come up with $150,000 to $200,000, forced on me for no apparent reason other than we want to do it. I would like to make another analogy. What if someone in Lansing said, you know what, everyone that in the Ann Arbor City, you have to go to a geothermal system, because we think it's best for you, even though your furnace works perfectly fine. You have 90 days to do it, come up with the money, and if you don't do it, you will be fined. That's exactly what's happening to us. Everyone that's going to get annexed here has a perfectly good working system. The only thing that seems to me is it is a way to help fill the coffers of Ann Arbor. All of these systems work. There's no need for this to happen to us. We are being told what's going to happen to us. So we are here to beg you to reconsider. It's our understanding that this decision might come as soon as October 1st. We were given, we received a letter about 10 days ago. We were here Monday to voice our concerns. We're here today to voice our concerns again. I can't even fathom how anyone could in good conscience say, you have to come up with $120,000 and do it within 90 days. It is clearly being ramrodded through, hoping that there'll be no pushback from the residents. Well, I'm here to tell you, we're pushing back. We are going to be affected dramatically. I don't want to work another five, 10, 15 years to pay for this. Why should I? Why should anyone have to come up with that kind of money when their system works perfectly fine? You look at the list of fees that are going to have to be added on to, it's just fee after fee after fee after fee. And for what reason? So that they can get water to houses where they already have water, and then get sewer out of the house where they already have a perfectly working septic system. So we are pleading with the council. At the very least, give us more time. Delay this decision.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Glenn Nelson.
My name is Glenn Nelson, resident of Ann Arbor and one of the leaders of Citizens for Mental Health and Public Safety. I urge you to initiate a series of community conversations on the uses of the funds from the County Mental Health and Public Safety Village. I and others from Citizens for Mental Health and Public Safety made this request as we constructed the fiscal 2019 budget. Our position has not changed since then. I will offer what I think are the two primary reasons for this request. The cohesiveness of our community will be greater if we have a community conversation about climate change actions, mental health services, and related budget items. We live in a divided community on this issue now, where many supporters of mental health services feel climate action activists are taking funds that were meant for mental health services. On the other hand, many supporters of climate change actions feel mental health activists are trying to take funds that were meant for climate change actions. The right way to reach a broadly accepted resolution of this divide is to have a community conversation about it. Second, the need for better mental health services is great. Improving these services would produce significant benefits to Ann Arbor citizens. We should be focused on improved services as well as improved political process. In conclusion, Citizens for Mental Health and Public Safety would be pleased to help plan, in conjunction with climate change advocates, a balanced series of community conversations on this issue. Thank you for providing this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. That concludes Public Comment Reserve Time. We now move to Council Communications. Are there any communications from council? Councilmember Bannister?
Just to follow up on Glenn Nelson's comments there, one of the committees that I serve on as a council member is the County City Corrections Advisory Board, which is folks from the Public Defender's Office and the Sheriff's Office and the city police and the jail and all of them. One of the updates that they have at their meetings is an increase in an ongoing high level in acute mental illness that is coming through the jail systems. And the Michigan Department of Corrections has given them their piece of funding through 2019, but they are still challenged for funds locally. And so their operating costs to handle this huge influx in acute mental illness coming through the correction system is, their operating costs far exceed... through the corrections system is, their operating costs far exceed the money that they're receiving from the county. And so, they will be getting, and they're happy to be receiving, the new village money and that is going to buy them some more time. And, but they're, we just met last night and so, as an update to you, to you all, the message from the County and City Corrections Advisory Board is that the conversations about how Ann Arbor is going to help handle this acute mental health problem need to continue. And just on an upbeat note, one of the things that they're able to do with the village money is they are opening a mental health unit within the jail. And this is a big success for them so that the mental ill people do not have to be segregated and isolated, which only exacerbates their illnesses. So, they are, things like the mental health unit in the jail are things that the City of Ann Arbor can help work with our people over at the county to address this, this long rise in acute mental illness.
Okay. Thank you for that update, Councilmember Bannister.
Thank you.
Any other council members? I have one council communication related to the administrators and Mr. Crawford's communication on community participation in developing the city budget. This was in response to my budget amendment last May and I very much appreciate the thoughtful response and recommendations. I also appreciate that it was provided in the requested timeframe, so thank you, Mr. Lazarus and Mr. Crawford. I believe strongly that direct citizen participation and input is an essential element in developing city budget priorities and that's what this is intended to accomplish. The timing is important because in just a few months, we will begin discussions on the fiscal year 20 budget and fiscal year 21 financial plan. And the intent here is to have real, actual community input to inform those discussions. Anyway, thank you again, Mr. Lazarus and Mr. Crawford. And I also plan to bring forward a resolution to the next meeting, September 4th, outlining the process, next steps, and projected costs. On behalf of the mayor, I will share these communications. I would like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented at the August 9th meeting. Eric Mahler, a reappointment to the AATA Board. Paul Darling, a reappointment to the Building Board of Appeals. Molly Kleinman, filling the remaining term of Melissa Stoltz on the Transportation Commission. Can someone please move these appointments? Moved by Councilmember Brand, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointments are approved. And for consideration at the next meeting, Mayor Taylor is presenting one appointment, Kathleen Mozak Betts for the AATA Board. Can someone please move the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Councilmember Smith.
I'm not going to, to pull this off of the agenda. I simply wanted to bring this up as a discussion for point going forward. CA 3 is a resolution to award a contract for pavement marking maintenance. We outsourced this 100%. I think that we need to have our own paint crews to be able to stay on top of stuff instead of outsourcing this with a contract each year. I think that the responsiveness to our citizen concerns that Ms. Griswold brings up a lot, we, makes it very difficult for us to respond quickly. If we had an in-house paint crew, we could respond to these things and stay on top of it and augment that with additional services as needed. But I just wanted to bring that up for us to think about as we go forward, that I don't think that this is the model we want to follow going forward, but ultimately, that'll be a budget decision that, that happens next year.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes, I'd like to pull CA 4 and CA 7 to be considered separately immediately after the consent agenda.
Thank you. We will consider those immediately as you recommend after the consent agenda and those are being pulled. There are eight voters and there are not eight of us present, so, thank you. Any other discussion of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. And again, we've moved CA, item CA 4 and CA 7 after the consent agenda. We now come to public hearings.
Uh, CA 4.
Oh, I'm sorry. CA 4. Sorry, just said that, didn't I? Thank you. Would someone move item CA 4? Councilmember Eaton, thank you. Second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Councilmember Eaton?
I would move that we postpone this until there are eight of us to vote on.
It'll be the next meeting.
The next meeting, hopefully.
I don't think anyone else is going to show up at this point, so, we'll move to, is that September 4th? So, postpone to September 4th.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilmember Eaton? CA, would someone like to move CA, item CA 7? Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Ackerman?
I'd move to postpone this to the next meeting.
Item CA 7, seconded by Councilmember Brand, is moved to.
We got to vote on the postponement.
Again, September 4th?
We have to vote on that?
I know.
Oh, sorry.
I understand that. All in favor of postponing CA 7 to September 4th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Both items CA 4 and CA 7 have been postponed to September 4th. Now, we come to public hearings and thank you for bearing with me. To speak during public hearings, you need not have signed up in advance. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. Speakers may only address the subject of the public hearing and may not grant any other time to another speaker. You may speak only once on this topic. If there are multiple speakers, and this may or may not be necessary, please form cues at either side of the council chambers and alternate speakers. Kindly provide the courtesy of allowing all speakers to be heard. And finally, if you require assistance while speaking before council, we would be delighted to provide it. The first public hearing tonight is an ordinance to amend section 5.29.4 of chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Special exception use is a type 1 citizen participation application. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Vilmety?
Hi. My name is Edward Vilmety. Let me spell that for you. It's V as in Victor, I E L, M as in Mary, E T T I. Thanks, Jackie. I'd like to speak to the topic of this public participation in general and I'd like to delay, I'd like to extemporize long enough so that I could read a part of it. The challenge of public participation in general with public hearings is that it's very difficult to get adequate public participation unless people are really riled up. And people who are really riled up tend to not give very cogent arguments. They are angry, as we heard tonight, they're frustrated, they feel like they're not being heard. And I think the city could do a much better job through its communications department in addressing this. I have found as a general matter, of course, that the city communications department likes to message out things about things that are happy talk and is not quite so good at messaging out things that are concrete city issues that have some diversions of opinion. And so, I'd like to encourage the council to look at this issue closely and see whether some of the costs associated with it might be used to improve communications outbound from the city, to not just tell us how wonderful our parks are, which they're wonderful, and not just tell us when various streets are going to be closed because we know that's going to happen, and not just tell us when the football games are going to be because we figure that out pretty quick. But also tell us more vigorously about public meetings, public hearings, and not simply rely on a single poorly subscribed-to mailing list that I'm on from the city clerk's office to notify the people about, you know, to notify the people that there's something going on in their backyard. Because that's a very narrow focus of lists with a very small number of people on it who get copies of all the public postings. And unless you're willing to walk all the way around the building to look at all the public postings, it can be very difficult to find out exactly what's going on in the city in terms of public meetings. Just as an example of that, related to the topic of notification of meetings, I understand that the council administration committee did not meet today. And I was surprised by that because I get all those notices and I was surprised that I didn't meet and miss a meeting at four o'clock because it was rescheduled the next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening, council. My name is Jeff Hayner. I'm, I'm excited that we have a public notice requirements are being slightly expanded with this. I think that's really great news whenever public notice is being expanded. I was looking through the tables and I noticed one thing that struck me as odd and actually when I'm out talking to people, a lot of people, like Mr. Vilmety said, are very interested in, in finding out what's going on with the city. And they like notice in, in more ways than are represented in this table. And so, when I'm going down through this table, I see in line four, we have a wetlands use permit requires no public notice, no notification, no meetings, nothing like that. And yet, that's a state requirement. MDQ is getting involved in that if there's a wetland use permit. And so, that seems to me that that would require some kind of greater public notice than none. And then, moving down the line, I mean, this is just suggestions that I've heard from others and myself, that perhaps if wetland use permits would require public notice, so would things like removal of a certain number of landmark trees, a minimum number of landmark trees, combining parcels when we're aggregating parcels, not separating parcels, but combining them. Any kind of annexation aggregation when the acreage is in excess of two acres. The addition of any number of cars is, could be determined by parking spaces to a neighborhood. So, we talk about things like heights of buildings and total units, but we don't ever talk about cars. And so, if we have 500 cars going into a neighborhood, well, that's something that is going to be reflected in, is going to concern more people than just 500-foot radius. And so, I think it was in 2009 or so when we first started doing this, when we went from a sign on the pole to the postcards, that was a great first step and I think we need to continue that good work and expand these public notice notifications to more opportunities and even greater radius of the projects because the, the city's filling up, it's getting pretty small, and things that happen in one end of the city have a big effect on the other end. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening. Brian Fennick, 1305 Hutchins Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I think that the previous speaker kind of helped me formulate my argument and that is, to what end? Where does it end? I mean, public notice is great for certain things, I understand, a special exception use, you know, on an initial hearing, there should be, you know, increased public notice and increased public participation depending on the project. But when we're talking about special exception uses and perhaps there are conditions and if those conditions have to be changed over time, is that going to require another public, a, a public hearing? So, I just would hope that if that is required, or if that is a requirement, that you would consider an amendment to say that subsequent, you know, hearings on a, on a project that has already been approved and has already been noticed and a hearing has already been held on it, unless it's a substantive, you know, a, a major change to it, would not require another public hearing. I just think that that's reasonable and would not place an undue burden on people who've already gone through a lot to get a special exception use. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is an ordinance to amend section 5.17.3G of chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, medical marijuana provisioning center location restriction. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? You can raise the podium, sir, if you'd like. There's a button on the side that might help.
I can talk loudly. I was, my name is Charles Ream, Packard Street, Ann Arbor. I was stunned and depressed to read a July 17th MLive article by Ryan Stanton titled, "New Rules Aim to Further Limit Marijuana Industry in Ann Arbor." This is Ann Arbor. "Our voters support cannabis. Councilmembers mentioned in this article seemed to not know where they live. I will not try anymore to get any sort of license for myself because there's obviously political work I have to do and I would thought I was retired. Our city council, our city charter forcefully supports cannabis, just like our voters. Our voters have no big fear of cannabis. By initiating the $5 fine in 1972, Ann Arbor stepped out decades ahead of any other place on the face of this earth in terms of reasonable cannabis policy. Many voters have moved here since 1972 so that they could be safe and their children could be safe. We need bold and creative leadership from city council in terms of safely integrating cannabis into Western culture. Cannabis can create much enjoyment and commerce and serve to mitigate damage caused by alcohol, opiates, methamphetamine, or whatever. The cannabis industry in the United States is going to be worth many tens of billions of dollars. Ann Arbor is going to be a world leader in cannabis commerce. Councilmembers have noticed, noted that a few conservatives in our town have approached them full of various reefer madness fears." I think they should move to Celine. But, please, Ann Arbor voters don't want a few conservatives to be in control of policy here in Ann Arbor. Our voters don't believe in any distance requirements between dispensaries or any limited number of requir, numbers for dispensaries allowed. This policy is born of fear. And now, some propose to go back further to a thousand-foot requirement? Please, no. And if you're going to keep dispensaries away, dispensaries away from something, it can only be K-12 schools. If you show no proactive creativity with cannabis policy and step back into blatant discrimination, is what you're doing here, still further, you can be certain cannabis policy in Ann Arbor will be made directly by the voters by ballot initiative in 2020. You could choose to take the lead yourself. And please don't vote on this tonight. Postpone this until the mayor and other people are here. You can take the lead yourself. When legalization comes, form a committee, just don't go backwards anymore. You can lead or you can follow, just don't stand in the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening. Brian Fennick, once again, 1305 Hutchins Avenue. Thank you again for an opportunity to speak once more. My concern is about the effective date of any amendments that are made and whether or not they are, whether or not they consider active petitions, petitions that are going through the process right now, and what would happen to those petitions if they were not in compliance with the amended ordinances by the effective date. So, we have a number of provisioning centers and other license, or permit types that are currently in process. Some may be scheduled for a hearing in front of the planning commission. Others may be real close. I mean, in any event, there's been a lot of capital expended by these projects to get to where they are. And to all of a sudden change the rules three-quarters of the way through the game and not allow them to continue their petitions and go through the process would be patently unfair. So, I would just hope that you all would consider current petitions and where they are in the process and allow for an effective date that allows for them to get through that process in a reasonable amount of time. And I would also echo Mr. Ream's sentiment that these amendments be postponed until there is a larger body present. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hi. I'm Kelly Wapich. I live in Ward 2 here in Ann Arbor. I am a pediatrician, mother, and citizen of Ann Arbor for more than a decade. I do support the amendments tonight put forward to move from 600 to 1,000 feet between dispensaries and then also to expand the thousand-foot barrier to include daycare, childcare, and to re-enter youth centers. I have previously sent you a significant amount of documentation from the Michigan American Academy of Pediatrics as well as peer-reviewed literature that does well document with knowledge, not fear, a concern in well-being for children. And this is based in fact, but if you don't believe me, the medical community at large, then please believe yourselves because you, as this body, have already recognized or acknowledged. acknowledged that there is an inherent problem with children's exposure to marijuana by your establishment of a 1,000-foot buffer zone for K through 12 schools. It is illogical to assume that that risk does not apply to the same age children outside of a physical school building. And it's also illogical to assume that it does not apply to younger children. I urge you to heed the medical advice that toddlers and infants are equally, in many ways, more vulnerable and to take action to help protect our vulnerable populations within Ann Arbor. For those of you who have expressed previous concerns that it would be near impossible to track daycares and youth centers, I actually state that it's irresponsible and it's merely an excuse. If you looked at the data that I provided you, more than 11 states have statewide requirements to include buffer zones for daycares and youth centers. If 11 states can do it, if Los Angeles can do it, and if our neighbors to the west in Grand Rapids, who have frequently outpaced us in terms of the impressiveness of their living and sort of recognition for their community steps, I believe that Ann Arbor can rise to the challenge and find a way. There are also those of you who are concerned that this amendment will make it too restrictive. And we are not asking for medical marijuana to be dispensed from Ann Arbor. I recognize that that is an important identity of the city. However, there's no reason for not to live in harmony. I ask yourselves, do you know how many medical marijuana facilities are really needed? Do any of you on city council know how many licensed pharmacies actually exist within the city of Ann Arbor that serve all drugs for all patients of all ages of all diseases? 91. How many of you sitting there in city council actually know the number of patients in Ann Arbor who have active medical marijuana license? 300, I'm sorry, 3,562 patients. That represents 3.2% of the population in Ann Arbor. You have an obligation to serve and protect this over 16,000 children that live in this city. And so I ask that you keep that in mind because they represent 14.5% and their hard-working parents and families who live in this community are counting on you to protect them. I urge that you form a strategic planning committee to leverage all of the local expertise that you have at your hand with a top 10 tier public school health and medicine, leveraging all of the stakeholders involved to come up with a rational, harmonious policy so that we all can live in safety together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hello. I'm Barbara Felt, Ann Arbor resident. I'm also a developmental behavioral pediatrician and division director for developmental behavioral pediatrics at Michigan Medicine. In my research work, prior research work, I did animal studies on nutritional deficiencies and well know how even minor deficiencies during development can affect brain structure, metabolism, neurotransmitter systems, as well as long-term behavioral and developmental outcomes. That experience, plus what I've learned as a developmental behavioral pediatrician, really urged me to come to you today to lend my voice with Dr. Wapik in support of the amendments. My, I've lived here for 24 years. I've raised two children who benefited from a safe community and participated in the public schools and benefited benefited from all the resources that the city had to offer. I hope that we can present the same safe environment for future families and present families to also raise their children to their potential. So what do we know about advertisement? Even storefronts can affect the behavior of teens, increase the risk for their their use, and increase the risk for negative outcomes. So I lend my support to the amendments as advised. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you, city council. My name is Gregory Yanek. I'm a pediatric oncologist here in Ann Arbor also. I think one of the striking things about today's meeting is if you look behind me, is the number of pediatricians that are actually standing behind me. It's a whole row extending on two sides. I think there's a common voice that you're hearing from pediatricians in this community supporting what Dr. Wapik said, supporting what Dr. Felt just said. Potential neurocognitive effects on children of marijuana are real. Potential effects to a fetus from a pregnant woman who's using cannabis are real. Potential effects to a young child of a nursing mother who's using cannabis are real. This is an agent that is highly fat soluble, meaning that its uptake into the brain, into breast milk, into a fetus are real. I support everything that Dr. Wapik said, everything else that Dr. Felt has said. I support the American Academy of Pediatrics' public policy statement from January 26, 2015, which also acknowledged, I'll just read it, that the academy, this is the Academy of Pediatrics, states its opposition to medical marijuana outside the FDA regulatory process and presents recommendations to protect children in states that have legalized marijuana for medical or recreational purposes. And then, as Dr. Felt just said, the American Academy of Pediatrics then goes on to state, the American Academy of Pediatrics discourages adults from using marijuana in the presence of children because of the influence of role modeling by adults on child and adolescent behavior. I think you have to appreciate that the potential effect on neurocognitive development is real, potential effect of role modeling in our children is real. I strongly support what Dr. Wapik stated in terms of extending the distance, the buffer zone to 1,000 feet, and also extending it to other facilities that have direct care of children outside of the K through 12 schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Hi. My name is Edward Vilmedy. I think council has a real challenge here because by treating marijuana in isolation, we also perhaps neglect the potentially deleterious and potentially beneficial effects of several other legal substances. For example, tobacco is sold routinely and consumed routinely in near and about not just daycare centers, but also routinely consumed near bus stops, routinely, despite a city ordinance, routinely sold to, from stores that cater to children, routinely and notoriously advertised to children. And so I have to weigh, in any sort of work that we do as a city to regulate marijuana, to consider how we might also regulate tobacco because, given the choice, if I had a choice, unfortunately, I think my children have not expressed a desire to consume either. Given a choice, I would much rather deal with the neurocognitive risks of marijuana than deal with the neurocognitive and addictive and toxic risks of tobacco. And I'm not even going to go in the alcohol world. I know that alcohol is a very complex situation. It generates a large amount of money for this city and also generates a large amount of problems for our mental health system. But just to weigh alcohol and tobacco, you know, if we had a Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Marijuana that was regulating in a coordinated way those substances, then I think we would have a more coordinated policy. Because realize that the downtown development authority is handing out DDA liquor licenses. Now, I don't want to say left and right because you have to make a substantial investment, but they're handing out DDA liquor licenses, and I don't want to say with wild abandon because it's not wild abandon, it's very deliberate. But there's liquor licenses being handed out routinely in our downtown to the point where, you know, unless you work really hard, sometimes you have to find, have a hard time finding a place that's dry. And as a person who organizes lunch on a routine basis, who has people who have been sober for a number of years as their lunch companions, it's super important to have dry places to go for lunch. And that's, you know, that's a shrinking, shrinking thing. So in some, I think we should treat these substances together and not separately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please come forward. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lorraine Schulman, and I am a psychiatric social worker who works in an adolescent treatment program for addiction. And I'm just here today to support my medical colleagues in support of the ordinance and to speak about, for the adolescents, younger and young adults who are trying to stay sober and need safe places when it can be hard to find in a very, at times seemingly cannabis-friendly city, that there should be safe spaces. And there's a lot of adolescents who are psychologically vulnerable, who don't have the same unanimously positive effects from marijuana use that others might have and who are fighting against depression, anxiety, psychosis, schizophrenia, and these things that have been shown to be exacerbated by cannabis use. And I do think that environment, it sends a message and that it's important to be mindful about the environment around youth-oriented centers.
Thank you very much. Are there any others, are there any others who would like to address council and speak at this public hearing? Please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Lockridge. I'm a local businessman, and I've moved here in 1988. I've raised two children through the Ann Arbor public school system. I used to be a basketball coach here in Ann Arbor for several years. I had a youth program in baseball and basketball. Didn't take me long to realize when I moved to Ann Arbor, the friendliness of cannabis and marijuana use. I've raised a couple of children in Ann Arbor area, and I know a lot of the youth here. I'm not a medical doctor, and I don't know the effects, but I do know that from a father's perspective, I think it's very reasonable to have a consistency of 1,000 feet. I don't understand why we would do it for K-12 and not do it for the children of our community. So Dr. Wapik called me yesterday and discussed the issue with me, and I think it's very reasonable. So I'm in here to support her and definitely agree with the fact that we should consider 1,000 feet for other facilities, not just K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
My name is Homay DeLash. I'm the owner of Miss Bilingual Preschool. I don't understand why, you know, right now, the rule is just for protecting the K-12. I think the younger children is more vulnerable. And also for our daycare center, we are licensed for children of zero to 12 years old. And we always, in the summer, we always have school children come to our daycare to, you know, like do school, like summer camp. And we also have before-after-school programs. We recently just got the application from parent. Her, right now, we even support a public school for their after-school preschool program because Ann Arbor Public School, according to that parent, she told me, like, Ann Arbor Public School, they don't offer after-school care program. So they, they have to send, use the bus to send those children to private, you know, schools. So if you protect children from K to 12, we have other children at the same age. It doesn't make any sense why, you know, they are getting protected when, you know, in the school hour and after-school hour, they are still, you know, out of family, still learning. Why that time you don't protect them? I don't understand this. Yeah, please consider we should also protect our younger children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three is an ordinance to amend section 5.15, Table 515, and section 5.37.2 of chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, Marijuana Infused Product Processor. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number four is an ordinance to amend section 1:207 of chapter 8, Organization of Boards and Commissions, and to repeal chapter 85 Taxi Cabs of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of council, thank you for being here tonight. I know it's an odd evening, but at least it's kind of sunny outside. My name is Michael Benson, resident of the first ward now and former and final chair of the city's tax cab board. Never thought I'd be saying that again. This proposed ordinance amendment has three components, and I'd like to speak to two of them, please. As the last chair of the city's tax cab board, and actually the author, part of the Transportation Commission section of chapter 1, I'd like to draw your attention to the proposed amendment to section 207, which would serve to strike a critical charge to the commission by removing, quote, "report annually to the city council and the city administrator regarding the effectiveness of the city's transportation strategy process and make recommendations for any changes thereto," unquote, and changing it to requirement to report the commission's activities. This proposal removes an explicit charge to examine the effectiveness of the city's transportation strategy process and to make suggestions. When drafting the language, we based this section off of the charge to the Human Rights Commission, which is charged explicitly to, quote, "make periodic public reports and recommendations to the city council and city administrator on ways to improve city government programs and ordinances designed to eliminate discrimination or to remove the effects of past discrimination." And also, that of the design review board, which is charged to, quote, "to report annually to city council regarding the effectiveness of design review process and make recommendations for any changes to the downtown design guidelines." So it's in line with other aspects of the code. Please amend this, and please do not dilute the charge of this important commission. The second piece of the proposal I'd like to speak to is perhaps a bit more esoteric. The proposal before you seeks to strike chapter 85 in its entirety from the city code. On the surface, this makes sense. The state preempted all municipal taxi regulatory systems at the end of 2016 when it standardized regulation for limos, taxis, and introduced a minimal level of regulation for transportation network companies or TNCs. In the nearly two years since this law was adopted, these three types of transportation methods have evolved, and the transportation landscape in our city has changed as well. However, the protections that we offered to riders and the responsibilities that we imposed on riders and taxi providers alike have not been replicated by the state. In fact, I'm really disappointed by the lack of action the state has taken in this area. The city's non-discrimination policy, for example, guarantees, along with a host of other protections and safeguards, aren't there. The state currently doesn't allow municipalities to deviate from the elected law. This could change and perhaps hopefully will in the future. But even without the assurance that it will, I implore you to leave chapter 85 in place. Much as other parts of the code anticipate changes to state law that would go against our collective values and ideals, chapter 85 is similar. Should the state allow a little control at some point and add an oversight, we should leave this in place as it indicates what we'd like and this will aspire to. I urge you to strike this amendment as well. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Jeff Hayner, Ward One. It was nice of Mr. Benson to go first because he said everything I was going to say with the exception of, with, my concern was similar with the repeal of chapter 85 because when we're going to get rid of the taxi cab board and we have this new transportation commission, and my concern is that the transportation commission hasn't been properly charged with the regulatory, establishing a regulatory framework over any kind of for-hire conveyance, like, for example, bicycle taxis in this town, which are a big success story, especially in the downtown area, the DDA area. And so I was not able to find where the transportation commission has that authority like the taxi cab board does. So I'm going to second what Mr. Benson said, that I think that chapter 85 should stay in there to make sure that we are in a position to be agile when it comes to for-hire conveyances in this town. So I'm not sure if we're giving up that authority completely with doing away with the taxi cab board, but we definitely should not because there's a lot of concerns by business owners and folks downtown, like they're seeing these cabs on the sidewalks, they're seeing them back up traffic where cars can't turn and things like that. And I think there's a concern for some regulatory oversight for these petty cabs. I think there's a concern for some regulatory oversight for these petty cabs in. It's a good business, and it's nice to see them, and it's nice to see taxis off the street, but we need to keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing?
My name is Edward Vellmety. I'll be brief and speak to two aspects of this ordinance, things that you're changing and some things that struck me as unusual in the ordinance itself. I echo several other folks who've spoken before me, the desire to retain Chapter 85 as an expression of desire and as a statement of the city's principles. I guess, having recently used some of the transportation facilities at our airport, including car rental service and attempting to use bus service, I notice with some surprise that the Transportation Commission has no oversight over air traffic, and that we have an Airport Advisory Commission that's completely separate, and I would think that that consolidation might be useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no other speakers, this public hearing is closed. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Can someone please move the meeting minutes of August 9? Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of August 9 are approved. Now we move to ordinances and resolutions. Would someone move Item B1? Moved by Councilmember Westfall, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. B1 is an ordinance to amend Section 5, 294 of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, special exception use as a type-one citizen participation application. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Councilmember Grant. Special exemption uses.
Love it.
That's me. That's okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
No. You just told me Councilmember Grant, but that's okay.
All right. I was writing an amendment to the Transportation Commission ordinance. I got distracted.
So, it's B1?
B1. Thank you. Special exemption uses, thank you, Councilmember Love. Special exemption uses are a fairly rare tool within our zoning code. They historically don't come up often, but in the course of 2018 have been popping up on planning commission agendas time and time again, with, you know, rare occasions of controversy at locations. The reason for this is, first and foremost, medical marijuana provisioning centers now require special exemption use. The state made medical marijuana legal at the beginning of this year, and left it to local communities to regulate the land use or zoning requirements and regulations. Here in Ann Arbor, wanting another step of oversight or discretion in evaluating the location of provisioning centers, decided that special exemption uses would be required for these locations. The other reason the special exemption uses have gotten some notoriety in this calendar year is the Rainbow Care Child Facility going in off of Nixon Road on the northeast side of town. These, these have caused quite a community, a bit of community conversation, especially around the amount of community input, or the lack of community input that's been, opportunity been provided for. So, I appreciate Councilmember Love's leadership in bringing forward the idea that we look at escalating the amount of citizen participation necessary in special exemption uses. I think it's appropriate. These are, you know, changes in uses that are special by their nature and their definition. And I think that citizens and neighbors deserve the opportunity to have dialogue with the petitioners. I will move one small amendment to this, to this ordinance amendment itself, which would to make the effective date be October 31st. That would be in line with the other changes in regulation to medical marijuana. This would just allow those petitioners who have already submitted applications to move about their business in, with the expectations that were set for them originally. That said, city staff has assured me, and I think would assure the rest of the body if people had questions, that all those new applicants would be strongly encouraged that they still hold the mandatory citizen participation meeting, because it will become ordinance likely by the time they get to planning commission. So, I'll make that motion if there's a second.
Seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Thank you. Consider this friendly? Yes. Consider friendly by the body. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ackerman. Any other discussion? I'd like to comment briefly, and thank you again, Councilmember Ackerman. I am pleased to support this tonight at second reading, and want to again thank staff and the Planning Commission for promptly responding to council's request in April to take a look at this. As I mentioned at first reading a month ago, there have been a couple of instances recently where, as Councilmember Ackerman noted, special exception use approvals were made by planning commission on items that were controversial. Those instances exposed a gap in our citizen participation requirements, that special exception use approvals did not require the same levels of upfront citizen engagement as other major development proposals. More specifically, what this ordinance does, change does, is to add special exceptions uses to the list of type-one applications under our citizen participation ordinance requirements. The result is that applications for special exception uses would require advanced notification of all property owner and owners' residents within 1,000 feet. Special exception use applications also would require conducting a citizen participation meeting to present the proposed project to any interested citizens, and to record this meeting, and that record would then need to accompany any submitted application. This, as Councilmember Ackerman noted, is a positive step. Robust citizen participation is a key value in Ann Arbor, and for that to be realized, citizens need to be notified and engaged early on, so their input can help shape the decisions that impact them. We've always had that with major development proposals, and with this change, we'll now have it for special exception uses. That's certainly appropriate, as SEUs can, as recent events have demonstrated, have a significant impact on neighborhoods. Thank you again to staff and the Planning Commission for promptly addressing this gap in our citizen participation process. I'm obviously happy to support it. Councilmember Westfall.
I'll just echo those sentiments. I remember years ago on the Planning Commission, there was a application for a religiously affiliated group housing situation, and I think a, an ordinance change like this, which encourages, which requires more dialogue upfront, can help, again, foster some understanding and some dialogue, and potentially avoid an applicant from being blindsided, you know, at Planning Commission, which is less, less productive than having a series of dialogues upfront. So, thank you again for bringing this up.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Westfall. I, I remember that group housing proposal. It was in the second ward, and I think what often happens in these cases, people write to council members, and council has no authority over special exception use applications and approvals, and then we end up redirecting to the Planning Commission. So, that was a very, that was, that was a major project in our neighborhood, and, and this would have been helpful. So, thank you for citing that example, important example, as a case for why this is important. Any other? Councilmember Smith.
So, I certainly appreciate, and I think we need to continually be vigilant about seeking ways to improve our public engagement on all aspects of what we do. My concern here is that I don't, I find that the citizen engagement meetings often create false expectations in the minds of the community. You know, we don't staff those with any of our planning staff. These are all run by the applicants. They are recorded by the applicants and reported by the applicants. And, you know, I've lost count of the number of times that I've had people, you know, express a great deal of frustration that none of their comments were addressed. And I think that, you know, this is a complaint about more than just this ordinance change, but, you know, we have to figure out a more effective way to do this. You know, we have to be clear of what the expectations are going in for the citizens that give up their time to participate in one of these, and we need to be clear what an applicant needs to do, provide, and how they need to respond. I mean, you know, we have a couple of applications in the queue that have done a citizen participation meeting and chosen to disregard every single comment that they've gotten. You know, and that's not particularly well conveyed to us as a body when we need to make a decision. And that, to me, is a little bit problematic. I would be much more inclined to support this if we had a stronger set of guidelines as to what, what these accomplished, how they are staffed, and to have city representation at these meetings to make sure that what we're getting is accurate. You know, in absence of that, I'm a little bit hesitant, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Ackerman?
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I appreciate that reality check about our citizen participation process as a whole. You know, the, the name citizen participation may be a bit of a misnomer in that I, you know, I don't go to Comerica Park and participate in a Tigers game, right? There's only so much I actually get to be involved in the game. And when a lot of these developments come through, through process, there's only limited real input that residents get into the project as it moves through the pipeline. With the case of these special exemption uses, and because I think the conversation here was sparked by medical marijuana, I have found that when dialogue happens through listening to citizen engagement, either at public hearings or, or in the letters we get, that that dialogue has been incredibly productive for these types of businesses. People want reassurance about the security systems, what sorts of advertising may be happening on location, will people be using marijuana on property, and having that dialogue with the operators has seemed to be very productive. There are cases where it hasn't. But on the whole, I think mandating that, that that conversation happen is a good thing. And similarly, it's also one of the things, that this is an opportunity to look at a site plan and ask for improvements to the property that we wouldn't otherwise, and citizen input has been valuable there, and a lot of these operators have volunteered to make improvements, even to public right of way. So, it's, I think, in this specific application, there's opportunity, but I think that's more the nature of the business. But I do think you really, you unveil a much more pervasive problem, which is how do we actually get residents' input into these projects sooner?
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I do also appreciate that concern, but just to add on to what Councilmember Ackerman said, in, in some of these provisioning centers that are coming forward, neighbors are just getting a postcard, and then they're left stuck talking to typically the attorney or other representative for the business itself, and have found most of those conversations not to be productive. So, for me, at least, this takes a step where those concerns can be public, and, you know, in meeting with the actual owner or the group that's going to, that's going to represent, or the actual business people, I think it's different, because I know, I've heard from a number of residents recently in the ward who, who have found that there are conversations with, you know, with the name on the end of the postcard, which sometimes might not even be someone, you know, in our community, leaves a lot to be desired. So, hopefully, if it is particularly contentious, we can also step in and request that some staff be present, if at all possible. We did have that situation recently with a second and third ward issue, and staff was incredibly helpful in that, in that meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Councilmember Westfall.
Sorry, I just wanted to try to get a clarification. There was a public speaker who asked about the degree to which a special exception use may be modified without triggering additional round of public participation. I mean, I'm assuming this would be the same threshold. Is there any other potentially administrative amendment to any other site plan? I just wanted to clarify that if it's not already answered.
See, Mr. Leonard approaching the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Address Mr., Councilmember Westfall's question. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Brett Leonard with the Planning Department. A condition is just that of a special exception use, and any modification of a special exception use that would seek to remove a condition, or change, or expand, would require a new special exception use. So, like, based on this amendment, even if a special exception use had previously been granted, and they sought to expand it, triggering the new permit application, it would be required to meet those citizen participation requirements. So, there wouldn't be any sort of grandfathering, if you will, of the previous citizen participation requirements. Any new special exception use permit would be required to follow the new requirements.
So, just to clarify, it's, it's not like a site plan where they want to change the color of some brick, and that's administratively handled? This, this, any change would be considered substantive and would trigger a new permit, and therefore a new public, citizen participation?
Yeah, and typically, yeah, you're exactly right. Any minor changes to the plan would not trigger that, and our ordinance has already established in that mechanism where it sets some thresholds as, based on the level of approval that would be required. Any substantial site plan change, for example, even for the same use of the same location that might come to city council, for example, would require an accompanying special exception use to acknowledge the more intense use of the property.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Passes with one council member posing. Would you care for a roll call vote? Okay, it passes. Item B2, an ordinance to amend Section 5.17.3G of Chapter 55, Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center Location Restriction. Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Is there any discussion? I do have a question. Oh, Councilmember Westfall.
I just want, I wanted to particularly thank the public who've come to speak on this item. This has, the discussion around this has educated me on a lot of things, and I really appreciate that. You know, I, I fear, you know, early in discussion about the centers and the density of centers and so on, I've probably been guilty of some, you know, health, public health relativism, in a way. And, you know, I recognize our citizens' strenuous embrace of medical marijuana, and we have a lot of other public health issues going on, but I really appreciate the outreach from the physicians in our community who, and other medical professionals who've, who keep an eye on this and who know the data, and this is a tough balance, and my thinking has evolved on this, and I'm glad we're having a discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Westfall. So, just a couple of questions. Mr. Leonard, if you could. I too would like to thank the, many members of the medical community and residents who have reached out to us, and very, as Councilmember Westfall has noted, very informative and helpful. So, we've received a lot of communications in support of this ordinance revision, and in the communications, there have been two suggestions that have been made. One, that it be implemented immediately, and two, that the language on, quote, "youth centers" that was removed from the substitute ordinance we passed at first reading be put back in. I don't see any substantive reason to delay implementation, but perhaps there are process considerations, and with the court, the current moratorium in play... And with the core, the current moratorium in place, practically speaking, it may be a moot point. So in terms of including youth centers in the distance restrictions, it seems reasonable, but maybe too limiting and results in no areas where facilities could be placed. So if you could please speak to both items, Mr. Leonard?
As it relates to youth centers, I would stick with my comments at the first reading. I think the, it's a more ambiguous term. The amendments that were made at first reading specifically relative to childcare centers and group home daycare centers, those are well-defined, established, that we can easily measure, attain information about from the state through the licensing process. I would just repeat my concerns from an implementation perspective on youth centers is that is a much more ambiguous definition that would give me concern on our ability to effectively always measure it and interpret it. I'm much more concerned about that than the ones that were incorporated. As it relates to timing, I would say similarly to the discussion as it relates to type one citizen participation requirements, we have, we've had a high level of special exception uses this year. We accepted permit number 38 this year, which compared to the previous years of four and six petition is pretty, a pretty significant jump. Some of the petitions that are still under review specifically for medical marijuana have been submitted as far back as February and June, are still being, trying to meet the technical requirements of our ordinances before being scheduled for a hearing. So my recommendation would be to maintain the October 31st date similarly for the previous amendment, so we can do our best. I can't guarantee it's absolute, but that gives us a reasonable window to try to bring as many existing petitions to resolution, while clearly communicating to any new petitioners the expectation of the new requirements. And so whether it's the previous ordinance adopted or the separation requirements and the new separation from daycare and childcare centers, I think the same date is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. Just a few brief comments on this as well. Thank you very much. Similar to the previous agenda item, this too is related to a council request in April, and I'd like to thank both staff and the Planning Commission for their quick turnaround on this one as well. I'd also like to thank the many residents again and the medical community who communicated with us on this ordinance revision with all I've seen in support of this change. It seems clear there are quite a few folks with strong views on this and concerns about the concentration and location of medical marijuana provisioning centers. I agree with those residents. And I believe from the outset that the minimum distance between medical marijuana provisioning centers should be at least 1,000 feet, not the 600 that we originally established. So I appreciate that we are revisiting this. And as we all know, since that's original, or that 600-foot decision was initially made, the actual volume, as we've just heard, of medical marijuana provisioning center requests has been more than I think any of us, I suspect, or most of us would have expected. And so revising this 600 feet to 1,000 is a reasonable change to limit their concentration, especially in areas near our neighborhoods and daycare centers. The ordinance has always included a stipulation that provisioning centers can't be within 1,000 feet of a school. But at first reading, we expanded the definition of schools from just schools themselves to schools plus childcare centers and group childcare homes. And I think that too was an improvement to the ordinance. As we know, planning staff and the commission originally recommended 1,000 feet minimum distance between facilities, and I believe then and continue to believe 1,000 feet is more appropriate. It's reasonable, it's more consistent with the preferences expressed by our many residents and neighborhoods, and obviously, I'm supporting this tonight. So, but thank you all for coming out and for all the information that you've provided us. It has been certainly, you know, a quick learning curve, but a very important one. So thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Bannister?
Yes, I will be opposing this. With all due respect to the medical community who has been speaking out about this, I feel that other residents have spoken up strongly, as Councilmember Lum mentioned. There's been a lot of strong opinions on this and that, that the restrictions placed on the dispensaries shouldn't, or provisioning centers should not be more than we would place on a drugstore or a pharmacy. And also that if, if in November recreational use becomes legal, we would not want restrictions on the provisioning centers more than we would have on a store, a liquor store or a bar. So for those reasons, the 1,000 feet was not, is not so much the problem, but maybe the, also the expanded definition got a little more vague into all these different categories of youth centers that people might, it might be much harder for us to define these and clog up our system trying to define the different youth centers and daycare centers. So with all due respect to the, to the medical community with the neurocognitive effects, I think that, that we shouldn't be placing more restrictions on these provisioning centers. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to clarify that we've removed the language on youth centers.
Okay.
Just as an FYI. Any other comments? Councilmember Smith?
I would propose that we take, you know, a three or four-minute recess. I think there's a question about how many votes this needs to pass and whether something in an ordinance passed with five votes.
No.
In that case, I would, I would propose that we postpone this until next meeting, when the full body is here to vote on it. Reason I say that is because right now I'm not inclined to vote yes on this, and I think we should have a full component of council members here to vote on it. I hate to make this, this change without a full debate with all our members here. Sorry.
Send all of that with my mic off.
Are you?
I am proposing that we postpone action on this until next meeting.
Is there a second?
I read second, then.
Seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Discussion to the postponement. I regret. We have an abundance of representatives from the medical community here tonight and others who've spoken, taken their time to speak to us about this, have written many, many letters and, but it appears that we do not have sufficient votes because of the absences of a few council members tonight to pass this ordinance. Looks like we have, can count noses, five, five votes in favor, which is not sufficient to pass this. So while I would rather we voted on this, but given the reality that we don't have adequate votes to pass this, I will support postponement. Any other? All in favor of the motion to postpone? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We should postpone to a time certain. We'll post, would you like to propose a date?
I think you said September 4th.
September 4th. Okay, so this item is postponed to the September 4th council meeting.
Thank you. Item B3, an ordinance to amend section 515, table 515, and section 5.37.2 of chapter 55, the Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor Marijuana-infused Product Processor. Move by? Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item B4.
I'd like to be known on that one.
I'm sorry? Oh.
No one.
I, so item B3, my apologies. Would you like a roll call vote, Councilmember Bannister?
No.
Okay, it passes. Item B4, an ordinance to amend section 1:207 of chapter 8, Organization of Boards and Commissions, and to repeal chapter 85, Taxi Cabs of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by? Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ackerman?
Thank you. Councilmember Lum. Get your name correct this time. I appreciate the feedback from members of the public, especially Mr. Benson, who do work on the original language of this, which has, I think, served the commission really well. I, I'm sorry, I have it. There we go. So I just wanted to quickly speak through each of the changes, of which there are three. The first being 2B, the presence of a city traffic engineer representative, city planning, systems planning unit, where, can, with the hire of a new transportation manager, and the fact that we're restructuring municipal government to be more vertical in how we deal with transportation, I think it's appropriate that the transportation manager be their representative. But Transportation Commission made it clear that they would like to be able to call upon traffic engineers and members of the systems planning unit as necessary. The, and then the one that stood out more was 3E, which was the annual report and the change from that report, speaking to the effectiveness of the city's transportation strategy process and make recommendations for any changes there too, and replacing that with activities of the Transportation Commission. I appreciate that the amendment does seem a little bit loose. And, and it, and so I was hoping to put forward a amendment that would kind of try to fit both goals. So I'll move the amendment that I just circulated, and actually looks as though Councilmember Eaton is circulating an amendment as well, if they're the same.
I'm simply proposing maintaining the current language in E.
I received one, I'm seeing, oh no, I see both.
So, so mine would be, the full clause would be, report annually to the city council and the city administrator regarding the activities of the Transportation Commission, which may reflect the effectiveness of the city's transportation strategy process and make recommendations for any changes there too. I think it reflects the Transportation Commission's desire to, to change their charter and the fact that they may be reporting out on activities beyond the scope laid out in the original ordinance, but then gives the strong recommendation that it include and be framed in light of the effectiveness of the city's transportation strategy process and recommendations for changes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by, I'm looking to Councilmember Eaton because you've submitted an identical amendment?
Not identical, slightly.
It's not identical.
Okay. Second, Councilmember Ackerman's amendment is seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion of the amendment. Councilmember Eaton.
Yours is expressed in a permissive form, or it may include those things. Would you object to making it mandatory?
A shall.
Where it shall?
Yep. And that would be friendly.
Then I would support that.
Okay. Thank you. So that's, so it reads now, report annually to the city council and the city administrator regarding the activities of the Transportation Commission. And shall.
It essentially says both now.
Okay. Any discussion? The amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, to the main motion.
And just quickly, because the aspects of chapter 85 were raised as well, it's been explained to the Transportation Commission, is my understanding that the state of Michigan has taken over these regulatory responsibilities and that cities are removing those from their code.
I have a question.
Thank you.
And I can't speak to the details of those state laws. Is Mr. Lazarus, perhaps?
Mr. Lazarus?
Sorry.
Sorry. If you cast a question posed by Councilmember Ackerman, could you repeat your question?
Oh, simply that the removal of reference to chapter 85 of the code, which regulates taxi cabs, that the state of Michigan has taken over these regulatory powers. And it's my understanding, I mean, municipal, these are removing reference to it in their codes.
I believe that's correct.
And then Councilmember Eaton had a follow-on question.
Councilwoman?
So, the speaker noted that there are things in chapter 85 that have not been taken on by the state, including the regulation of pedal taxis. Is, do you have any knowledge of that?
To the best of my knowledge, the state has taken on the regulation of vehicles for hire. So, but I'm not going to, I can't give you an absolutely positive comment.
I don't know. We can look into it and get back to you.
I think if, you know, we can bring back another amendment at another time, if that's helpful, or you could add language to the extent permitted under state law, if you wanted to add that as well, if you wanted to add it this evening. Wouldn't object to either approach.
Councilmember Ackerman? Oh, sorry, Eaton, you sold the floor. Sorry.
Yeah, I would move to include the language he just suggested.
I would second that.
Can you repeat that language, please? For reference?
The, the ask was to include regulation of petty cabs to the extent permitted under state law.
I have a question. Are there any other protections, while we're at it, that, as Mr. Benson noted, we have protections in place today that are not replicated by the state regulatory frameworks? Or might there be any other forms of transportation?
State's been pretty specific about regulating, taking over regulation of taxi cabs and TNCs, so I think we're precluded there.
Okay. And if you could clarify where the language is to be inserted?
He proposed. I have a question for the attorney.
First, if we could clarify this.
I think Craig Hube also has a comment that might assist.
Okay, Mr. Hubie?
If I could interject.
Please.
The deleting of 85 was seen as cleaning up code. It could be left in without any harm for what was the intent tonight, and if, at a later date after researching, and we were making other changes, we could go in and delete it at that time. So I don't see any functional harm deleting it in right now.
Would you recommend that we then postpone it tonight and revisit this?
It's just first reading.
It is first reading?
Yeah.
We're going to approve it, or it's a second?
No, this is a second.
This is a second reading.
Oh, man, I don't.
I don't think, Mr. Hubie and I would object if you want to postpone it so we can clean the language up. It's not a long time, the cleanup won't take a lot of time on a subsequent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hubie. So moved to postpone, Councilmember Eaton?
I moved to postpone to the second meeting in September, because I think that we're loading up.
We are. We are. I would agree. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda item C1, an ordinance to amend the zoning map being a part of section 5:10.2 of chapter 55 of title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, rezoning of .76 acres from R4C Multiple Family District to C2B Business Service District with conditions. 151 East Hoover, including 200 East Davis Avenue, 202 East Davis Avenue, 204 East Davis Avenue, 913 Brown Street, 915 Brown Street, 917 Brown Street, and 919 Brown Street. Move by? Councilmember Eaton, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. C2, an ordinance to amend section 2:41, point 2A through C2, an ordinance to amend section 2:41.2A through 2:41.2F, 2:43.1, 2:43.4, 2:44.2, 2:44.4, 2:45.2, 2:45.5, 2:47.2, 2:49.3, 2:49.5 through 2:49.8 and 2:50.2 of chapter 28, sanitary sewer of title 2 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item DC1, resolution authorizing the city of Ann Arbor to be listed as a supporting municipality in an amicus brief to be filed with the Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit in State of California et al. versus United States Environmental Protection Agency et al., case number 181114, consolidated with 1801118, 181139, 181162. Move by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I've sent Jackie a amended resolution that she can distribute. This amendment simply adds a sentence to whereas clause number eight, which now will read, "Whereas the federal EPA recently announced that they would conduct midterm evaluation of vehicle emission standards," adding the sentence, "On August 2nd, 2018, EPA and the Department of Transportation announced its proposal, the safer, affordable, fuel-efficient vehicle rule for model years 2021 to 2026 passenger cars and light-duty trucks, effectively freezing fuel efficiency standards." So it adds that sentence, and then, in the following whereas clause, it adds, "While they recently announced," it changes that sentence to read, "Whereas the federal EPA is proposing to revoke the state of California's vehicle waiver." So they are simply small changes reflecting the proper title of the EPA's proposal and program.
Okay, thank you, is it?
I read second then.
Seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Is this viewed as friendly? It is. Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember Smith, you still have the floor?
I'd just like to thank Missy Stoltz for bringing this forward. This is, she was at a sustainability conference a couple weeks ago, and the mayor's climate change group reached out to ask if we would be interested in listing our name as, on the amicus brief, it takes, it does not commit us to any use of our labor, it simply adds our name to the list supporting the old standards. And so, thanks, Missy, for, for bringing this up and for pulling together the draft language, and, you know, I hate that we have to continue to do these things at city council to, to fight what's going on in Washington, but I think it's important that we add our name to this list.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item DC2, resolution setting a public hearing on September 17th, 2018, to receive public comment on the proposed commercial rehabilitation district number 2018001. Move by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Councilmember Grand?
Oh, I don't, this is just to bring forward the ability for this group to hold a hearing, which I think is the proper thing to do, to be able to consider their project.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item DC3, resolution to award a construction contract to Fonsen Company, Inc. for the Rock Creek Sanitary Sewer Repair Project, $231,030, bid number ITB4526. Move by Councilmember Westfall, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item DB1, resolution to approve participation agreement with Webster Township in Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation and appropriate $91,800 from the Open Space and Parkland Preservation Millage for purchase of a conservation easement on the Ford Goldsmith property. Move by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Councilmember Grand?
It pains me to have to do this, because it's such a wonderful project for such a small amount of funds, but I would like to move to postpone this to the September 4th meeting.
To September 4th. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Westfall. I understand where you're moving to postpone it, it requires eight votes, we don't have eight votes, so it is moved again to September 4th. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. So it is postponed to September 4th. Item DB2, resolution to authorize a grant application to the USDA Agricultural Conservation Easement Program, ACEP, for the purchase of a conservation easement on the Russell property in Lodi Township. Move by Councilmember Grand, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Communications from the city attorney. Are there any communications from the city attorney?
No, Councilmember Loeb. I, I will say that we do not have a closed session tonight, and I'm going to have to seek leave from this body, because I have another matter to attend to, and I wanted to say that myself, instead of having Councilmember Smith say that for me.
All right.
With your indulgence, I will leave. Thanks.
He does a good city attorney.
Yeah, maybe he'll go in some time without.
Impersonation, but thank you.
Yeah.
And so you are confirming we do not, because it, on the agenda, it did note that we had a closed session, so no closed session tonight.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The clerk's report of communications, can we move to accept the clerk's report? So, so move, move by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Public comment, general time. Now come to public comment, general time. Any member of the audience may speak at public comment, general time, and speakers need not have signed up in advance. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may only have one person speaking at a time. Finally, if you require assistance while speaking before council, we would be delighted to provide it. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public comment? Please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because you could be out of here by nine, that's exciting. Michael Benson, again, I would like to thank Councilmember Ackerman for your amendments on B4, I guess it was. Much appreciated, and Councilmember Eaton for going to the declarative, shall or must. Just as a note, as you look at the chapter 85 piece, there are provisions both contained in chapter 85, but then also in other parts of the code that are worth looking at, and really that represent our values to move forward. The law that the, or the laws, I should say, that the state adopted back in 2016 are for motorized transportation, so petty cabs and all that were not considered. In fact, the Taxi Cab Board did attempt to look to include those about that same time, I guess, 2016. This is prior to us having a member of council with us, and we thought it would be best to wait for a council member to join, and then we went to the Transportation Commission, so that was enough for them to take on potentially. They've been doing other very important things, very good things, actually, but this is one of those things that I appreciate the postponement, so you can look at that and see, does it make sense perhaps for the city to have some sort of regulatory scheme for those petty cabs? And I would suggest it probably does, truthfully, at least to some extent. But with that said, thank you all for your service, and I hope you can get out and enjoy this beautiful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Thank you for your service as the chair of the Taxi Cab Board.
Years ago, thank you.
Hello, my name is still Edward Vilmini, though some might appreciate it otherwise. I come to speak primarily to the city administrator in his role as a member of the Downtown Development Authority Board. Mr. Lazarus, wish to thank you for the DDA's work in promptly and efficiently addressing a signed complaint and a request for a bicycle parking corral. The signed complaint was that one of the parking signs had a sharp corner at eye level, located in a spot that was blocking bicycle parking. Two hoops in front of Work and Tile, co-working facility at 118 South Main Street. That's Work and Tile, W-O-R-K-N-T-I-L-E, for the, for the clerk. In addition, the DDA staff quite quickly and efficiently accepted our request for a bicycle park corral in that facility, in front of that facility, and set one up, and immediately we had parking, not only for the bicycles that we used, but bicycle trailer parking, because there was enough space to park a bicycle with a trailer. So, thank you to you and to the DDA for that. That was very, very well appreciated, and if you could relay those appreciation to the staff, I'd appreciate it. The request is for additional bicycle parking on Fourth Avenue. In particular, there is a local bike shop by, that goes by the name of, the local bike shop, how convenient, that is located on the north side of Fourth Avenue between Liberty and Washington. I know about this because my son works there, and because I've tried to find bicycle parking in front of said bike shop, and had to lock my bicycle to a tree. Because there was no bicycle parking there, all the bicycle parking had been used up by bicycles. So, the request is to convey to the DDA a request to establish whether or not it makes sense to put a bicycle parking location in front of a bicycle shop. I think they will probably agree, because if they go back to their records, they will note that two and a half years ago, there was a bicycle parking space corral in front of said bicycle shop, and it was always full. So, I know that the street has recently been redone because of construction on the street. I don't know whether all the construction is done, I hope it is. No, it's never done. Construction is never done. So hopefully whatever corral goes in can be easily taken out and put back in. The owners of the shop are expressing interest in winter bicycle parking somewhere in downtown Ann Arbor, because we bike all year around here, even though there's no plows. That might take some work, might take a bollard or two. Hopefully that can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Good timing, who would like to speak at public comment? Please come forward.
Mark Corey, just want to express my appreciation to people who were involved in the last election seat council, and how hard they worked. I know Jack Eaton, who I urged to run many years ago for mayor, finally did, and even though he didn't win, he lost by 70 percentage points, we certainly appreciate the effort him and his supporters ran. It was a shock to me, and when I saw the returns coming in, that I thought it was going to be a real nasty night, but unexpectedly, we had three winners beat the council party. In fact, a couple here today, Jeff Hayner won, who I've known for many years, Ms. Griswold, who I urged to run for city council years ago, finally did, won, and there was another lady named Nelson, who also, I don't even know, upset Gray, Crayball.
How you doing?
A fellow member of the bar like Jack Eaton, so we got another attorney on, on city council, but I just want to say it was a great victory. I was actually there in 2008 with John Heathjudd, Chris Taylor, when he was elected, and I told him, I says, "You work for one of the most prestigious firms in America." It was the law firm Incorporated General Motors in 1908, and yet you're running as a Democrat. And there's nobody left from that, that class, except Chris Taylor, was still on city council, a lot of people I knew like Mike England are gone. I know that Dave Cahill's wife, Sabra, went, went to California, and I don't see them anymore, but it was a real good election, and I'm really glad to see it, and it was good to see all the people that were, all the Republicans that came in, like Ron Weiser and donated money, and Eileen Weiser and all their people who supported the candidates this race with money and all kinds of time. It showed we're still a bipartisan city here in Ann Arbor, so it's good to see that, too. We also have a Democratic Party chair, former chair of the city, is on city council, Ann Bannister, who's done a good job here, and for the people who lost, like Mr. Westfall, we appreciate your service for the last several years here, and congratulate Julie Grand, who I used to practice along for her husband, I know, and I said, told him, he says, you know, "I see your wife at city council." I said, you know, basically, he's right down the street here on Liberty Avenue, it was good to see them. It's really good to see, I always run to Mike England, who's, who's still, still see around every once in a while, but it's really good to see all, what a great election it was. We still got to have an election to fall, and I think Mr. Crayball's a here today, a chance to give a consolation speech for his service, but, you know, he did a good job so far during his term, so just want to say I'm really happy how the election went. Hope November will give us a good, a good group people on city council, and we can move forward from there, and I just want to, again, congratulate everybody who won and console everybody who lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment? Seeing no more speakers, that concludes public comment, general time. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Beating is adjourned. Thank you all very much, and thanks for putting up with.